Good evening. The time being 7:10. A former of the planning board being present, call this meeting to order. Welcome everybody back to in-person town meeting. Oh, not town meeting, meetings at town hall. See how we do this evening. All right. First item on the agenda, Agenda Item A, approval of minutes from May 24th, 2021.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of May 24th, 2021 as written.
All right. A motion made. Do I have a second? Motion made in second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Let me just confirm that now that we're here, we don't have to do roll call anymore, correct? All right, good. See if I can't speed things along as well. All right, moving on to Agenda Item B, we have committee reports, administrative actions. Are there any committee reports any members wish to make at this time?
No, all set, Mr. Chairman.
All right, seeing none. Moving on to B2, Town Planner's Report.
So I can answer any questions, Mr. Chairman?
All right, so do any of the members have any questions?
I just have a couple of comments, Mr. Chairman, if I could. I just wanted to thank you personally, Anna. I mean, she put together a list, a spreadsheet list of all of the projects that are outstanding in the town, some that have permits pulled, some that have not had permits pulled, and just an updated status of all the projects in Tewksbury. So I wanted to thank Anna McGinty, Town Planner, and Alex Lauder, Special Assistant, for all this nice work. And it's nice to have this list because at any time you can refer to it and, you know, and say, "Well, what's happening with this?" And this is coming up for renewal or nothing's happened at it. So I want to thank you for that because I had requested that through one of our prior meetings. So that's all, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. All right, moving on to Agenda. Oh, yes, Mr. Fowler, I'm sorry.
My only question is, Mrs. McGinty, is in 937 North Street, there's no name for it. Is that the Hilton Hotel?
Yeah, that's the Hilton Hotel. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to Agenda Item C, 181 Pine Street, Landplex on behalf of Pine Wood LLC, land disturbance permit, motion to waive the public reading?
So moved.
Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Do we have anybody here for 181 Pine Street?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure what your protocols are. We just one person at a table at a time or is that?
That's an excellent question. I have one chair, so I'm going to say yes.
Yes, okay. Common sense will prevail then.
Is it on? I might have turned it off by accident.
You can get close.
I might have turned it off by accident, I apologize. It would say on if it's on.
What do you got?
I'm vaccinated.
That's all.
All right, all set. Well, actually, it is nice to be here in person, thank you. It's, we're all on our way back. That's a good thing. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is the remaining element of the OSID permit that we obtained the approval for at the last meeting. So this is the, for the disturbance permit that, basically, it's pretty much the same issues as were addressed during the OSID hearing. It's just that the phasing of the applications weren't totally in sync, so this is to tie up the loose end of this final permit. So with that, I would defer to Landplex and Matt Hammer is here, and he will take the lead.
Good evening, everyone. Matt Hammer with Landplex Lowell. I would think that we all know what the project looks like. We've obtained numerous permits related to the project, of which we, the planning board, issued a definitive subdivision approval, a special permit for an open space residential development. The Conservation Commission has issued order of conditions on all the individual lots. And generally, this is a four-lot subdivision. As I said, we've gone through multiple iterations of the design, and we haven't changed anything relative to that design. And I can put it up to the board if they want me to run through the individual aspects of the project, or if all the board members are, have sufficient information for what transpired over the last 12 months with the project.
All right, we'll start with Mr. Patel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, we did a lot of meetings with 181 Pine Street. So I guess, Mr. Hammer, where are we as far as resolving issues that Mr. Hardeman has on his letter of June 11th? Have we resolved that or?
Gentlemen, I just asked Mrs. McGinty if we are supposed to be sterilizing the microphone between uses, and the answer is yes. So she's got to do that. Because you're sharing a microphone. You don't live together.
Have we been vaccinated?
Now we're vaccinated.
Mr. Plunkett, are you vaccinated?
We're a work in progress here. We're also the first ones, so we'll see. I think, why don't we do this while we wait for Ms. McGinty? Why don't you, if you just go to the podium, that way we can just clean them both when she comes back. Thank you, Mr. Fowler.
So, Mr. Hammer, do you have that letter of June 11th?
I do.
Okay.
I know that Attorney Plunkett have responded to that initial comment from that letter from Mr. Hardeman. I know that we had discussed at length the site distance comment, and I believe that's what you're referring to. Where at the planning board meeting, we provided an exhibit plan that showed the site distance being able to be achieved with two parking, two vehicles in the driveway of the Kelly residence. And I believe that's the specific comment that you're referring to.
Well, this was about the stormwater pollution prevention plans, the SWIP, and the erosion control plan. Is that, no? I mean, we just got it back on Friday, and that was one of my, one of my first pages I read about 181 Pine Street. I thought we maybe have been, would have had all of these resolved prior to our meeting tonight, so, but that's what I'm asking.
So we have not received this comments letter.
Really? Okay.
I can say that a stormwater pollution prevention plan is required prior to construction for any project greater than one acre, which is a combination of all the permits that have been issued, the stormwater report, as well as filing with the EPA for a NITDS permit, they call it, which is a National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit, of which there's a general permit issued by the EPA that is required to be filed prior to construction. So we understand the need for what they call a SWIP plan.
Okay.
We have an erosion and control plan that's been part of the Seminole Lawn in our plan set, so I don't know why there would be a comment related to the erosion and sedimentation control plans. We've gone through that, those devices that need to be incorporated with hay bales and siltation fence and areas of that nature.
You have my copy in front of you, but I think we're referring to something maybe being mislabeled. I don't have a copy in the locker, but it's number two on there.
Like I said, I don't have a copy of this letter.
Okay.
So I'm just reading it for the first time. Do you have a copy?
I should.
Maybe, but not right this second. So we're just trying to see if this, I mean, that's why I gave it to you, if you wanted to take a quick look at it. So if it's something that's not a problem and you can just, can be resolved, then that's fine. But if not, then, you know, we can push this so that it can be. But if nothing on there that he wrote is an issue, then it might be insolvent.
I don't have an actual copy. Mr. Fowler, do you want to get this later, so you can? That's my copy.
Thank you.
I mean, this...
You can hold on to that.
Yeah, she gave me a marker.
Everything in those comments are fine with us. In order for us to facilitate that additional information that may be required, so that needs to be a condition of the land disturbance permit, we don't have any issue with that.
Yeah, I mean, I just, one of the comments here was they were withholding recommendation until all the above comments have been addressed. So that was my question, is like, you know, we need Mr. Hardeman's okay in order to go forward on these items for the most part, you know, so.
I'm just surprised that they weren't forwarded to us.
Okay.
They're all, to me, standard things. There's nothing in the way of a material design change to the project. I feel as though those are things that could be conditioned on the issuance of a land disturbance permit.
Okay. I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fowler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Here lies the problem. If we don't vote for this tonight to approve it, even subject to you bringing the information to Mr. Hardeman tomorrow, we don't meet again till the 19th of July. So you know where you stand, Mr. Plunkett, Mr. Andella stands, and where we stand. So you have to be assured, you have to assure us that those four items are doable, and that you have to see Mr., I would suggest, you see Mr. Hardeman tomorrow. This is what I can do, and have him tell us through Mrs. McGinty, we're all set.
If that's...
Mrs. McGinty, is that all right with you?
Yeah, I defer to the board.
Well, yes, I don't want to judge something to you that is out of action, but we should take the action as long as Mr. Hardeman gets the information. Of course, it was, the problem here realizes not to point a finger. We didn't get it till Friday, so it's awful difficult. Even if Mr. Hardeman got that, I mean, even if you got it, you couldn't respond to Mr. Hardeman. One second. But you would only have got it, right? So I'm trying to make it work.
That's all. Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Mr. Delaney.
Well, I don't have a problem with any if the questions are answered. You know, the questions still stand here. You know, we've taken a long look. Chances are, a lot of these questions have already been included in the original go-around with the, because we've been dealing with this thing for a long period of time. But how do we get assurance by us sitting here? How do we get assurance that these things, I'm sure these things are going to be done? Because the D to W, everybody else can shock if it doesn't make the grade, so to speak. So that's where I stand. I'd like to see this be done, but I have to have, I don't know how we get a guarantee here tonight that it will be. So that's where I stand, Mr. Chairman.
So for my purposes, and again, as we've discussed before, we've tried to get away from the subject twos, because, and then the back and forth that happened afterwards, because once we're done with it, we're done with it. And then we end up in the, you know, at best, you come back for some sort of non-substantial or whatever. However, as Mr. Fowler pointed out, where we have no meeting between now and July, if the petitioner is willing to condition the approval for compliance with these four items, I'm okay with it because we're only talking about a land disturbance permit, we're not talking about a special or anything else bigger than this. So if you guys are fine with it's subject to and you guys being compliant with providing what's asked here, then I don't have a problem with us doing it that way. That's our assurance, because they can't go forward unless these four items are taken.
You have another assurance, which Miss Andella just apprised me of, is you have a bond, right? So there's a bond that gets put in, there's still another whole process that the town goes through before anything gets constructed in terms of the checklist in order to even begin. So you do have a whole mechanism ahead of the town.
And I know, but we don't want to get to the problems of dealing with bonds and coming after bonds and that kind of thing. I'm talking about what we've tried to do, we get away from these subject twos, but in this case, with everything else that's involved, if you're okay with it, then I'm okay with conditioning it here for this one, again, because of the type of permit we're talking about, and again, the meeting schedules and whatnot, that, you know, I'm not as concerned about it as normal, so I'm willing to be fine as long as the other members are as well. So it sounds like you guys are okay with that. So that's, the only thing is, you're going to have to figure out a way to either be on the mic or not on the mic, because I can't, it can't be in the background.
No, Mr. Chairman, for the record, your proposal is acceptable to the applicant for moving forward in that direction.
All right, so then we'll just leave it at that. We don't need to beat a dead horse on this one.
Chairman, Chairman Andella, applicant, we were never notified about this letter. We never received it.
I understand that, but we can't solve that problem tonight. The only problem we can solve is when we move forward. So let's do that, and it'll just be simpler for everyone. All right, so with that, we'll open up to the audience. Does anybody have any questions, comments on 181 Pine Street? Seeing none, and I presume that we have no one in logging in on any of these multiple platform options for contacting us still online. All right, so with that, I'll bring it back. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to close the hearing.
All right, motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. As to the land disturbance permit, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
So it's...
The land disturbance permit.
Okay, subject to the four items listed in Mr. Hardeman's letter of June 11th that they'll be complied with and addressed by the petitioner.
And I will say this in meaning, that it will be done expeditiously tomorrow. If he's out sick, you can't do it. But if he's there, I want you there, and I know it's not your fault, you didn't get this.
And I will CC Mrs. McGinty on the motion tomorrow.
All right, so we have the motion with the conditions as listed. Let's just give a real quick hit here, so everybody hears it at home what we're talking about here. There's a stormwater pollution prevention plan, the erosion plan, the third one is the clarification on the section 19.04(c), item one, and the fourth one is the 19.04(c), item nine. All shown on the, I already managed to reference that, but I just want to say it for people at home. All right, so with that, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A question, do you want me to bring?
I'll do it.
Thank you.
Hands off, Mr. Plunkett, hands off, okay?
All right. Moving on to Agenda Item D, 100 Apple Hill Drive, signed special permit. Do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. We have someone here for 100 Apple Hill Drive.
Yes, Allison Ibbetson with Loritano Sign Group. Good evening, Commissioners. We are here seeking special permit approval for an existing EMC sign that is within the Raytheon complex property. It's approximately 280, what is it, 284 feet from the main roadway. There's also a security booth that blocks it, and you can't see the EMC until you get up to where the, where you can go left or right inside the property. And I did address some of your concerns in regards to the regulations. I did unfortunately did not hear back from the police department.
You can have it here?
The lieutenant did not respond back to my emails or phone calls. So I don't have his feedback.
I'd be stunned if a sign this far from the street would be a safety concern, correct?
I agree, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so I think we're fairly safe there. All right, anything else?
The EMC is capable of doing the whole time. We can abide by any rules or regulations you guys set or the timeline of the sign.
All right. All right, we'll start with Mr. Delaney.
I don't have a problem with the sign at all. The only thing is, we were talking earlier, and Mr. Fowler said something about the red. Is it a color code that we go by? I've never heard of one.
It's typically, the way it's written up is that it's not going to contain red or green lights, but that, I mean, it's also...
But this is in a place where nobody's going to see.
What is the coloring on the wall?
It is red with a black background.
All right, well, let's, I believe we've located this before, but we have to do, we have to waive, make a, provide a waiver if they want to do it that way. So I guess the question you still have is, would you have an issue if it's black, black background with the red lettering? In this case, because we're talking about, this isn't one of the signs like the traffic control. Right, okay. All right, so you all set otherwise, Mr. Delaney? All right, Mr. Patel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, the sign appears to be fine to me. You know, it's an internal sign, it's not really open to the public. I couldn't even get access into the facility to even get to the sign, because I wasn't an employee of Raytheon and understand why it's as secure like that. So, you know, it's a highly secured facility, and it's not open to the general public. So with that being said, I don't have a problem with the sign, you know, and updating it as you designed it. So I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fowler.
My only question, again, on the red, is on the building, the traffic control building, are there any lights on that? Red, green lights to stop, in other words, can the person inside that control, how was, stop people with red lights?
I don't know. I don't.
When you go up, are there any lights at all?
I did not visit the site, so I'm not very familiar with the property itself. I apologize.
Here, let me just explain one thing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Here lies the problem. If there were red or green lights on anything, traffic lights, and if this interferes with it, if there are red or green lights on the sign, it could confuse something.
That's understandable.
That's why we said before, black background, amber color, it's the same brightness as red or green. And that's why we did it, so it wouldn't be confusing. I wish you could say that you know there are no lights there.
I don't, there's no lights within the complex, if that's what you're referring to, but on the, at the road, I'm not 100% sure if there is or isn't.
Well, there are lights out at the end of the driveway.
Okay.
I'm not talking about those. In other words, if there was a problem on site, does the person guarding inside that room and that gage have the ability to stop people from coming in or going out by putting a light on?
I don't know the answer.
I mean, just from what I've seen from the street, I think it's just gated, right?
But it's changed over the years, you know?
This tree is right in the way, otherwise we'd probably have that issue ourselves. Credit the picture.
Well, this only takes three weeks. That's my only objection, because it would be going against what our thoughts have been over the years.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I think the combination of this being internal, being a secure site, that, you know, you're not getting any traffic in there that isn't, you know, isn't allowed in to begin with. You know, I do understand Mr. Fowler's concern, because we can't tell, you know, is there any possibility that that sign could be distracting to someone in some way, but, you know, for where it is and what it is, and the site itself, I'm not as concerned about as I would be if it was a street, out on the street somewhere. So otherwise, I think I'm all set, you know, with allowing it. So with that, I'll open it up to the audience. Does anyone have any questions or comments on 100 Apple Hill Drive and this signed special permit before us? Seeing none, I will again ask, on any of the online platforms, do we have anyone calling in? I did not think so. All right, what is the pleasure of the board for this?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, it's a FOV. Oh, it does require FOV, okay. All right, so I guess...
Sir Chairman, I just wanted to clarify, on my comment letter for number one, there was a typo, so it should be read section 5234.
Okay.
Just for you, just so you know.
Mr. Chairman, just a comment if I could. You know, and I understand Mr. Fowler's concern as far as the red-green, and we would not allow that on a public highway, a public road in town, for those signs because of the possible confusion, so. But I think for the most part, in my opinion, this is a directional sign that's interior in the facility, not open to the public, and I think it just directs people left or right, depending on where they're coming in and where they want to go. So just, just my opinion, Mr. Chairman, but I'm all set.
So, Mr. Fowler, do you have any further comments, or do you have any suggestions?
I'm not going to repeat myself on the first one. On the first meeting, obviously, that subject two was a gift for 181 Pine Street. Well, Raytheon is going to have to live with it if there's a problem. I wish you had the knowledge of what was going on there, so we would be clear in our mind, but I would support the proposal.
So just for clarification, the sign color, the writing coloring cannot be changed from what you have proposed, is that it?
That is correct.
And it's bright red?
It is red. I mean, we can dull it, we can decrease the brightness of it if there was an issue, if you were to visit the site and see the sign. I can have a video taken of the sign, so you can see how it looks like.
All right, so then, I guess, at the minimum, then subject two, request by the board to have it dimmed from what it is now, in the event that it is a, not distraction, but conflict with some sort of light on site?
You know, it'd be a simple thing if we knew.
Right.
The gage. I just can't believe that the gage, if they want them to stop everybody, puts the on down with all the light there. You know what I mean? It will be Raytheon's problem. They want that based on what the, the stubbornness of the amendment, because everyone else has come in here and told us, oh, we can't tell.
Mrs. McGinty, so the one waiver would be on the allowing of red?
Yeah, so it would be section, a waiver for section 5234, and then section 5232.a. And then section 5232.d.7. And then, so those are the waivers, and then for conditions, I have a note about the board needs to set a time, so that's item number 5232.d.8. And then, then you guys just mentioned a condition about dimming the red if it poses, I would put it as a safety hazard. That's just my notes here.
All right, so then my one would be on the illumination. Do we, do we have an issue with, because this is internal to them and no way near any streets, do we have any comment or concern?
As far as the times, Mr. Chairman? So do you know the operation hours of the Raytheon facility?
I do not know the hours.
Okay. Okay.
But I can definitely find out.
With it being 285 feet from the street, okay, it's, it's not like a stoplight or a, with all the light, nothing in the area. And even if it was on at night, who's going to see it?
Right.
Only the people that work at Raytheon, and they would understand the direction of the sign.
That's the Goddamn, there's a light in the Goddamn, it's only 50 feet away.
I see, but, you know, the way it's written is 285 feet.
Main Street.
But I mean, that's what I'm collaring, so with the, right now, I'm just talking about, do we want to limit the hours, because it says here 12:00 AM to 6:00 AM? Do you have a, do you have an answer as to, do they have a problem with the standard, which is 12:00 AM to 6:00 AM?
I did not talk to Raytheon about the standards, I just, I just thought that that was what was going to be required, so I was...
Okay, so in the reverse, then, you did not get feedback from Raytheon that they have an issue with the 12 to 6?
I did not.
Then they won't change anything, you'll leave it the way it is? If they have an issue with it, they'll have to come back?
Okay.
Okay. All right, so then, still back to, what is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to close the public hearing.
Motion made, do I have a second? Motion made, second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? As to the signed special, I mean, yeah, the signed special permit as requested, do we have a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the special.
I'm sorry, I jumped the gun, we have to deal with the waivers first, so, I have a motion on the waivers.
Make a, make a motion to approve the waivers as discussed by Ms. McGinty previously.
So we have 5434, 5232 dot A?
Dot A.
5232 dot D7.
Yes.
And this is to account for the, um, allowing of the red lettering at this point?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then the condition on, in the waiver or in the main permit, for the condition on the color dimming?
I would do the waivers first and then the conditions when you're approving it.
Okay, so there's the waivers, we have a motion made, do we have a second? Motion made, second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
With reservation.
So approved, but with reservations, okay. All right, so unanimous, all right, as to the special permit itself, do I have a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the signed special permit, but with the condition that, um, if requested by the board, that the coloring will be dimmed from its current color to whatever dimming we can or request, is that...
Yeah, and then I had to know about, the plan board does need to set a period of time for the message, so...
And then the motion would be that the current, um, requirement of 12:00 AM to 6:00 AM is the illumination time?
Um, no, so the, the set display, so if it's like a minute, the interval, you know, 30 seconds, yeah, so...
Okay. Do you want to just set it at, nothing changes any sooner than one minute per change?
Sure.
All right, so include that in the motion. All right, so we have a motion made, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, all right.
All right, moving on to agenda item E, 1660 Main Street, took straight home bill, um, site plan special permit, special permit, land disturbance permit, do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
So move.
All right, so I have a motion made, seconded, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Gentlemen, state your names to the record, the floor is yours.
Jim Hanley, Civil Design Consultants, here with Dick Hooko of Woodland Design, Bruce Buckley and Jim Scalise of Soldier On. So, hoping that I can kind of provide you with a presentation on the screen, I don't see that. But I think I can share it, you can see it back there. Brian, if this doesn't work, you'll let me know. Does that work?
So, we're not seeing it up here, right?
Can you see it back there?
Behind you, yes.
Binoculars, okay.
Is this paneling right here? Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, again, for the record, Jim Hanley, with Civil Design Consultants, um, here, uh, on behalf of Soldier On, um, and we're here to present a 21-unit, uh, veterans affordable housing proposed at 1660 Main Street. We've got, uh, two permits with you, a special permit for development within the C V O D under 9300, and a site plan special permit under 400. We also have a permit that we're in the process of working through with Conservation, and a permit for access to 38 with DOT that we're working on. Tonight, what I'd like to do is, is kind of walk you through existing conditions, proposed conditions, talk about the waivers, and let you know where we stand, uh, right now with everything. Before I get into that, though, um, there's a handful of items I think it would make sense to kind of keep in mind as I ramble on here about this, this proposal. 21 affordable housing units, um, all of these units are one unit, uh, one bedroom or studio units. This is going to offset somewhere around 210 market rate units, uh, that, that the town has recently, uh, approved or has approved. There's little to no impacts on community services, schools, police, trash, snowplowing, um, that'll all be done, um, privately on the development. Uh, the housing is specifically for veterans, so, uh, guys that come back, that might be having a difficult time, um, this is specifically for them. And when I turn this over, I'll give it to the guys from Soldier's On, and they can tell you a little bit about all the services they provide as a company to these guys. So I think at the end of the day, I'm hoping that you're going to see this as being a significant, uh, benefit to the town.
I don't, I don't mean to be difficult, but is this single gender, people?
I think it typically is, I don't think it has to, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yep. Again, so, uh, we've, this is our second time in front of you, but for the benefit of the public, um, I just kind of want to give a summary of the, the legwork we've done before we've come here for the first time formally tonight, so we began survey and design in July of 2002, that was just about a year ago. Housing Subcommittee meeting, uh, we attended in February earlier this year, we had a preliminary planning board meeting with you guys in March to talk about the general, uh, configuration of the site and the, and the building itself, uh, which is essentially pretty much very consistent with what we, uh, talked about in March. We also met with the selectmen, we met preliminarily with Conservation, and we had a preliminary IDR, so we've done a lot of legwork here to try to flesh out, um, all of the town department head comments and, as well as the boards. We've also had multiple conversations with, uh, Planning, Conservation and DPW as we've moved this through the process. So, so existing conditions, 1660 Main Street, tech map, 73 lot 40, uh, we're directly across the street from, uh, Stoneberry Way. We're north of Tanglewood and we're directly east of Heatherwood. You might recall that when we were in front of you for the Balsam Place development, um, there was an out parcel along 38 was, which was part of the mitigation for Balsam Place, this is that out parcel, so we're actually permitted to do site work and bring the parcel up to grade, uh, under, uh, under the Balsam Place, but that's how this, this lot, uh, came about. About an acre and a half with 250 feet of frontage on 38, um, it's located in the multifamily and the, uh, C V O D overlay district. It abuts a transitional district directly to the east, south, uh, to the, to the Tanglewood abutters on that side. Above a third of an acre of wetland out of the 1.5 that it, that's on the lot. Grays Range, Jamar, along Main Street from about 102 at a high to the, down to the wetlands, which wraps around to about elevation 89, give or take. And then we have a 25-foot, a 50-foot, a 100-foot well and buffer that we're trying to, uh, to balance, uh, and if you've driven by over the last year, which I'm sure all of you have, you've noticed that the trees have been cut, um, removed, stumped, and there's ongoing, uh, earthwork operations there, and that was done as part of the Balsam approval to try to deliver a, uh, a building-ready pad, um, uh, which hasn't been completed yet, but that's why you've seen some of the work out there, so. Where do we stand? Proposed conditions, um, the building footprint is 4,750 square feet. Again, it's for affordable veterans housing, it's 21 one-bedroom or studio units, no two bedrooms, no three bedrooms, 21 one-bedrooms or studios. It's a four-story, 42-foot-high proposed building. The C V O D, which we're applying under, allows for two and a half stories and 35 feet. The underlying zoning district says three stories or 45 feet, um, so we're, we're greater than, uh, both of those, but we're less than the MFD, uh, actual height measurement requirement. One thing to keep in mind is that when we came in front of you in March, we had a 62 and a half foot tall building, and I think we'd heard what the board was saying, so we went back to the drawing board, I think if you look at the, uh, the roof, I believe they call that an inside roof. And by doing that, we're able to, uh, reduce by 20 feet, give or take, the actual height of the, uh, the building there. There was another comment as well when we went, uh, when we came before you, and that was to try to maybe jazz up the facade in the entrance facing Main Street. So this is, this is kind of what the architects came up with, just has a little bit more, um, I guess, design, and as a comparison, I, uh, let's see, as a comparison, I'd show you what we were proposing in March, so we kind of had this different style roof with a... I don't like, I don't want to criticize the architects, but maybe a plain facade there, um, and then we've, so we've kind of enhanced that a little bit, uh, lowered the roof, and then tried to pretty up the entrance, uh, as much as we could. So, where do we go from here now? So, now we go... To my side, so, um, ADA accessible, uh, all of the development would be ADA accessible, we'd have 19 parking space, spaces. The closest type of use in the zoning bylaw is for multifamily, if we took a strict multifamily, um, parking calculation, we'd need 42 spaces. One of the waivers that we're going to ask for consideration for is specifically for parking, and I think we have some, um, some data that we can, we can fall back on. To develop this whole site, to show them, we have eight tenths of an acre of disturbed area, approximately half an acre of impervious. Because we're filling the site and the sands are relatively sandy out there, we can actually get away with pervious pavement, and if you recall, the last time we were here, we had a pretty large detention basin in the back on the far end of the parking area. That had impacts inside of the 50, it had impacts inside of the 25, Conservation didn't like that too much, so we kind of scrapped that scheme, dug some additional test pits, and were able to make pervious pavement work, um, as well as one, um, subsurface infiltration system for the back of the parking area. So the system's been designed to meet DEP stormwater management standards, we have no increase in peak flows and no increase in volumes. We also met with Conservation last week, we had our initial meeting, we, we kind of talked that through, we're going back to them next week, and we're hoping to have a clean letter, at least as far as stormwater goes, from DPW, that we could then present to Conservation, and we're hoping that we're being in a position for potential, close the meeting and, and get a decision. We have three waivers, uh, in front of you, uh, one is for... We have a site design here that allows, uh, a visitor, uh, one of the service providers, uh, or anybody to come in off of 38, turn in, uh, drop off through, through a designated ADA space, and then traverse around and exit the site. To make that work and to provide the geometry that we need for a passenger car or a small van, um, we need a certain size diameter, that only leaves us with 3.7 feet from our curb line to the right-of-way. But, keep in mind, it's 3.7 feet on our site, everything grades out without any impacts within the right-of-way, and we probably have another 12 feet, give or take, to the actual roadway, so there's probably close to 15 to 20 feet between our edge of pavement and the 38 edge of pavement. The other thing is, this needs to go to DOT, like I mentioned, so, uh, DOT is going to look at all of this stuff and make sure that, uh, that, that pavement offset works for them. Our second waiver request is for reduction in parking, so, uh, when the guys from Soldier On speak, they, they probably will be able to speak this a little bit better if you have, uh, additional concerns or thoughts on it, but, uh, 19 spaces are provided, 42 are required. You're allowed to, to reduce the number per section 8690 of the zoning ordinance, when you have a situation where there's shared parking on another lot, we don't have that, but what we do have is public transportation, um, in the area, and one of the services that will be provided, uh, at the facility is transportation for the residents. In addition to that, we have, I have looked at four, uh, example projects that Soldier On has completed over the last 10 or 15 years. All of, essentially what they found works is providing parking for basically half the units is sufficient. So we have 21, we could actually go down to, uh, say 11 or 12, and they believe that that would be sufficient parking to, uh, to satisfy the need. We actually have 19, so we're closer to one to one, basically. I have four examples here where we have one space per three units, one space per six units, one space per four units, so, um, they've had a lot less parking than what we're proposing here, and it actually satisfies the needs in these exact facilities located throughout the state. Waiver number three, a building height, um, let's see, so two and a half stories and 35 feet is allowed, uh, we're at four stories and 42 feet. Again, you're allowed to issue this waiver under 86892, if you believe there's a specific public benefit, which I hope that you find that there is. Also, the MFD allows 45 feet, we're actually below that, uh, we do have the four stories, but physically wise, we're actually below that. Fits in pretty well with the buildings in the area, um, you'll know Heatherwood is over there, I believe that's three and a half over there, Balsam is over there, which is, uh, four residential, uh, living levels over one, um, level of parking, uh, and then Village Green is right down the road, so I don't think this is, uh, anything that isn't in that immediate stretch of, uh, of 38. Finally, what we're able to do, and if you drive by the site, you probably can appreciate it, but the actual elevation of the slab is about two and a half to three feet lower than the roadway, so instead of building everything up like we would normally do, because I like to have that slab kind of at eye level, makes the site look right, um, we've, we've allowed it to, to basically sink down, uh, two and a half feet, um, and what's governing us is the elevation of the groundwater in that area, because we have to maintain certain clearances to that. And then if you were to look on the abutting property, we're actually about eight feet, give or take, lower than the abutting property direct, directly to the right. So I think we've done what we can to minimize this as much as we can, um, but those are the three waivers that we're requesting, uh, pavement within the front yard, the parking reduction, and the building height. Just to finish up here, where we stand, uh, last week, or, or the last couple of weeks, we received, uh, review letters from Planning, DPW and Conservation. We don't take exception, uh, with anything right now, and we think the... We think the reviews are pretty good, and we'll work with them to address their technical comments, and I think we'll be able to address all of those over the next couple of weeks, I'm hoping. D O T application will go in later this week. We wanted to make sure that we heard what you guys have to say before we submitted and then had to re-cment with D O T. And again, we met with Conservation last week, and we're hoping to have their approval. If not next week, we'll be two weeks or three weeks thereafter, so it'll be before your July meeting. So with that being said, I thought it would be a good idea for Bruce Buckley to say a few words about Soldier On, what they do, what the services are.
That's, it's been sanitized, so.
Thank you. Thanks, thank you, everyone, for seeing us tonight. Yeah, I'm the CEO, Bruce Buckley, of Soldier On. Soldier On, and I'll be brief, because I can talk a lot about it, because we really do do a lot, but briefly, we've been around for twenty-five years as a nonprofit that started doing work specifically on the V A campus in North Hampton or Leeds, Massachusetts as a private nonprofit. And we're working with veterans who are homeless or at risk of homelessness. And that really was a small project, again, started, really, it was more than twenty-five years. It was nineteen ninety-four. After doing that, we bought a site in Pittsfield, Massachusetts, and really grew the footprint of where we did transitional housing. But really, at that point, we saw a lot of veterans who needed housing, who needed support services to stay in housing, because often they would leave our program, go back out on their own, and have some difficulties, and be back with us in transitional. So that really generated the need, in our eyes, to develop permanent housing, which we started trying to do, is really having no idea what we were doing in about two thousand and eight. With that effort, we opened our first property, a new construction of thirty-nine units in Pittsfield, Massachusetts, on property that we owned. And since then, over the last ten years, we've opened up, we're on six properties in Massachusetts. The most recent one is a fourteen-unit, specifically for female veterans, on our Pittsfield campus as well, and that opened a year ago. And one of the things that I know, because this is certainly what I do and am familiar with, is the veterans who move into our permanent housing are successful. And roughly ninety percent of the veterans that we look at, of which I know most of them pretty well personally, are with us after they move in. Not to say they never have a struggle or difficulty, but because of, as Jim mentioned, the wide variety of services that we offer in permanent housing, we're able to help, if there are difficulties, work through those victories, those difficulties. So, a little bit of what we do, without spending a lot of your time, is we, everyone has a case manager, and we have staff on-site, definitely every day during the week, Monday to Friday. We also work with veterans on a regular basis via, we do telehealth now, we do FaceTime, you know, we use all the technology that we've all become very familiar with the last year, as a way to supplement being on-site. We have a transportation system that the federal government, the Department of Transportation, provided us with some grants about, I think, seven or eight years ago. And in the Pittsfield, Massachusetts, at the, the Intermodal Station, which is the bus station, the train station, we have a staff of three individuals in our call center, a manager, and then we have about a thirteen-vehicle system that works with, I call it Uber, but it's really just a software system that we were given by the Department of Transportation. And that system, everyone has a tablet in their car that's a driver, and we're giving a lot of transportation to a lot of veterans, starting often in Western Mass, but often going to the V A in Boston, in Rocky Hill, Connecticut, Albany, New York. So we're moving around right now all the time, and part of this property would receive all those same services. So either a case manager, or the veteran, or someone else in the agency can schedule rides, and as Jim mentioned, we provide a lot of transportation to the veterans that live with us, not just for medical services, but for benefits, if they need access to visit or go to an office for benefits. So we provide a lot of those services as well. In addition, we have, you know, the V A is a partner of ours, working with us, hand-in-hand with all the veterans in the property, as well as a variety of the, the local veteran service officer would become a part of what we do, and, as well. So, you know, we provide, again, a lot of support services. I could keep going, but I don't think that's necessary. I just wanted you to get a sense of how we really support the veterans, how long we've been doing this. This would be our seventh property in Massachusetts, and we've got a seventy-unit apartment building in Titten Falls, New Jersey, that is going to be opening in October, because we have grants in New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, as well as Massachusetts. So, I don't know if anyone has any questions for me, or any other pieces they want to hear?
Stay there for one second, and we'll run through it that way, in case any of the board members have questions in either direction, you'll still be up there. Is that all right?
Sure. Yep.
Start with Mr. Fowler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Glad to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you for your service to the people in service. It means a lot. I'll ask a couple of questions, nothing too high.
Sure, take them on. Fire away.
How many people would work on-site in the largest ship?
Well, I think it would depend. I, it's not like they show up for work necessarily, one person every day in the building. We currently, because we have a property in Brighton, Massachusetts, that we've partnered with Brighton Marine, another veteran service provider nonprofit, we have staff every day now in Brighton. And there's a woman, actually, who came from Tewksbury, who we hired. I think she now lives a town or two over, but she lives in this immediate area, and we look to hire more. So there would be a case manager in and out of the building on a regular basis. It's not like they show up there at eight o'clock and stay to five o'clock. It really, you know, there's a model that we run all of our buildings with and kind of share our resources. We don't assign someone to a building specifically and solely.
Other than the case manager, do you have someone like security, or do you have anybody for janitorial services? So what I'm trying to find out is, how many people would be in that building during the day, other than people who live there?
You know, daily security, we, we don't have a need for. We don't have that in any of our properties. And, you know, Brighton Marine does have security on-site, but it's not just for us. So there wouldn't be daily security in there. There would be staff that's in and out of there. And a lot of in-and-out can be transporting veterans. So it could be, they pick a veteran up, they bring him to the V A, they do some other work with them. So there wouldn't be a lot of employees that are just all over it. I think janitorial, you know, the, the buildings, we often, and I can't guarantee it here, but we often end up hiring a resident to do some of the work. A lot of the veterans who came through our program or are still in our program are employees of Soldier On. So that would be what I would expect to might likely happen, that someone that lives there could be picking up some of these pieces, even being a driver, I think, you know, it would be something that we would look at, that opportunity.
Do you, are you, do you work with the Bedford V A?
Yeah, we work with all the V As. Bedford.
Talked to me about all the ones around, but I was surprised.
Well, I didn't mention it, but I just, yeah, I mean, the Bedford V A is the head of the visit, so a lot of the staff we work with daily is on the campus of the Vetra, of the, the V A.
And my last question is, not question five, from the plans that you have in front of you, in front of me, I'm pleased with what the service you've had for the neighbors to your right, east of the site on Main Street. Mike, you know, you could have done a lot for service as far as filling it a higher little, and there could have been an impinging upon those three people that are directly to the right of the building. But that, the minds looking at the plan, trying to understand the elevations, I think you've done a great job. My comments to, my thanks to people who do that, but no, I'm very pleased with what I've seen so far.
Great to hear. Thank you.
What's up, Mr. Fowler? You good? All right, we'll go to Mr. Fattaya.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know the Tewksbury veterans can really use your help, and any help that we do for a veteran in town, or any newly residents of Tewksbury that are veterans, they'd be greatly appreciated, you know? So the unit, the units that we're going to have are twenty-one units, correct, Mr. Hanley?
Correct.
Okay. So some of the comments I've seen from Mr. Hoddeman was, was the sidewalk issue. He mentioned about vertical granite curbing.
Yeah.
And so forth. Your opinion on that, so?
Yeah, so there's two sidewalk issues. One is with D P W.
Yeah.
The other is with planning. So Planning, I believe, has asked that we connect thirty-eight to the building with a accessible sidewalk, which is more than reasonable. So we'll take care of that on the revision. The D P W noted that the sidewalks are in good shape, or sufficient shape.
Yeah.
But there's little to no reveal, right?
Right.
So, the challenge is, is if we put a curb in with a reveal, then we're probably going to be up over the sidewalk, kind of thing.
Yeah.
So I think this is talking with them a little bit, talking with my client a little bit more, and then also ultimately, D O T has a water square. They have to approve anything, so it's kind of balancing all of those, but.
Okay. Well, my concern, another concern, was the fact that the guardrail is there as well?
Yes.
So I'm not sure how much that hinders you with the, with the vertical curb there, curbing and so forth and so on, but the other comment they had, we got the sidewalk, is there's temporary fence there now, you know, was put there, you know, purposely so that somebody wouldn't be walking along that sidewalk and trip and fall down the hill.
Yes.
So, you know, with that being said.
Hello? Yes. Is this, is this Francine?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Let me just.
We can hear you. That sounds good. All right. Can you hear me?
Yeah. So with that being said, I didn't know if, in your plans, that maybe there could be something as a provision along that sidewalk internally, so.
Are you there?
Nobody would fall.
Uh, yep, just, uh, one minute. Okay, no, it's me.
I don't know where that's coming from.
We're just working on reverse glitches now for being back in person, so please be with us. Mr. Fattaya? Continue.
So, you know what I'm saying, Mr. Hanley?
I do.
There's a temporary fence there now. I don't know if you could put up a post rail fence along that internal part of the sidewalk so that somebody wouldn't be falling down, you know, for safety purposes.
Right, so I think there's going to be a combination here, keeping some of the existing guardrail along the, along the thirty-eights.
Hello?
But also, on the left-hand side, there we do.
Hello?
We have a steep slope up against it, so it'd seem to be reasonable if we could put some sort of.
All right, sounds good. And I did review the virtual meeting we had about the parking, and it seems very, very logical, you know, your explanation, Mr. Buckley and so forth, about not having the need for parking. And that's, I don't, I wouldn't have a problem with that at all. Like I said, you know, if you're providing a van service, I mean, just behooves people that live there that they would take advantage of the van service and not need a car. So, so the parking, you know, in my opinion, I would have no problem voting for that waiver. So, what else here? You know, the rendering that you guys provided looks great. Thank you for reducing the size of the building, and it'd be a very appealing building, in my opinion, that we could have on Main Street at that location, so. But with that, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
This is Delaney.
Yeah. I, I think this project is nothing but positive for the country. Twenty-one affordable units, okay. The place, the renderings is just fantastic. I, I just feel as well, like Mr. Fattaya said, the parking community is not an issue. These places don't use all the parking space they think they would. The only thing is, like, the nursing care or doctor's care, I'm sure some of these guys are going to need, you know, visitors, like.
Hello?
Visiting nurses or something.
Hello? Uh, yes, I, I tracked it up. Yeah, you're, you're, you're both in the queue.
Right now, I don't know that we've designated a spot. We could certainly consider.
So, um.
I also think our other buildings, as, because of our success, I'd like to think that we do have a lot of aging veterans, so we, the, the longer we've done this, the more we see the need for services, and that's something the V A helps coordinate. And often, we end up with a caregiver that has four or five different veterans that they see at a time. So because of the way that this is scheduled, through the V A is often a provider of the support, one car could be servicing five or six veterans at a visit. So it's kind of a, a well-orchestrated service model that does reduce the number of cars on-site. But we could say, you know, here's designated visitor parking, because, again, we have the statistics, and Jim Schalise here, who's a civil engineer, has been on our other projects, and, you know, we've looked back, and we never even come close to hitting the fifty percent numbers in any of our properties. So this isn't just, you know, this is something we have a, a historic tabulation about what we see.
And at the end of the day, I didn't want to come back to you, we have to add more parking. We have more room on plan as is right now, but there's no, they, they believe there's no need, right? And they know their program better than I do. So we have the room, which is.
Hello?
Because they don't believe they need it.
We don't.
Is he honest with you? This sounds like a well-oiled machine.
Well.
Sort of.
You've been doing it a while, right?
I believe it. I'm all for it.
Thank you.
And I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
So, the only, since, since we're still on the parking thing, and I think this is just a feed-off of Mr. Fowler's original question, we're limiting the parking to about half what the units are. I think the idea was just that, that what little there is there isn't being, too much is being taken up by too much staff on-site.
Right.
So that the number isn't really what we think it is. But from your, what you've said, that's not the case. It's kind of more of an in-and-out. You know, and a lot of them, a lot of the times when they're there, it's actually because they're doing something with a resident anyways. So that, that was, I think, where we were just trying to get, you know, so if it's twenty-one, the twenty-one aren't really, twenty-one, right?
Yes.
Twenty-one.
Nineteen.
Nineteen, I'm sorry. Nineteen, but really minus five, because there's five staff on-site all day. You know what I mean? So that's, that's just the, the understanding. So other people here, you know, that's, so when it's nineteen, it's really pretty much the nineteen are mostly dedicated to the few folks on-site that might actually have Just as, as a question on it, do you, when you do the units, are the, are the residents told that they don't necessarily have a guaranteed parking space in the event they have a vehicle? Or do you not address that?
I think we would address, you know, the, the concept as we got closer. I mean, I, you know, again, we're so far from it ever having been.
Right.
An issue historically, that I think, you know, I understand what the, you know, the laws and the zoning laws are and, and all of that, but the planning boards, but we don't see the numbers come up to that point. So, again, we're going on our history that's, I think, relatively extensive, especially, you know, in the Massachusetts, and in New Jersey, we're seeing the same, the same thing. As we're getting ready to open it, we've got a list of potential veterans, and one of the questions we've put amongst a lot of them is, who owns a car? And I think we have sixty-three veterans on the list now, and I think we've got like twenty that have a car or something, so a third. And, you know, that's what we're seeing in another area with other dynamics, but it's the same. Because, again, this is affordable housing, so there's limits to how much an individual can make to be in affordable housing. Thirty percent A M I, fifty percent A M I. So owning a car, as we all know, is expensive, and it's just not what you see in the affor, in this population of affordable housing, beyond Soldier On, but I think, you know, including Soldier On and our specific experience.
And, you know, I, I think I already was, you know, I was already on board, you know, anyways, but I think, as has been the habit sometimes when we, when we have these, the waivers that we get asked for, is the reasons we give them seem to get lost in translation when it gets out to the public, as to why it is we waived something, that we just didn't do it on a whim, that we actually had reason for it, much like my next point, which is the height. I hope it won't also be lost in translation, that when we're discussing the fact that we're likely to waive the height requirement, that, again, we're not doing this on a, you know, a whim. The fact of the matter is, if you look at the site, it's depressed compared to its neighbors, compared to across the street. So in reality, when you look at what the height of the building will look. So in reality, when you look at what the height of the building will look like versus the actual size of the building, there's a reason why giving the height waiver makes sense, when you're thinking of reality, of how it will look when it's placed in, on the property, in comparison to everything around it, and that it's not just simply a giant building that, you know, we didn't think at all about when we said that the height isn't a problem. Again, presuming we get to the point where we waive the height restriction. We seem to have that problem sometimes, as we discuss these things. It's not a you problem, it's just a, you know, sometimes it's a little bit of a lost understanding when it gets beyond this room.
Well, again, I think, I'll refer back to Jim Skelis, who's been our civil engineer on our other projects, has, you know, stamped a letter that we can provide you that shows our parking history in all of our properties, and that may help support the waiver and have something more concrete or tangible for you.
Yeah, no, again, I'm not, I don't think anybody here on the board has any issue with the parking. I think it's been completely explained and sounds completely reasonable to me. Like I said, it was more just, again, sort of a belt-and-suspenner approach of bringing it up and discussing it, so that everybody else hears it too, same thing on the height, also taking into account, as is pointed out, this is an affordable, you know, an affordable project, which there's a benefit to the town, significant benefit to the town. 21 units that go towards affordable housing, and, again, I'd like it, I hope that the translation is that folks hear that, that in granting some of these waivers, that there is a benefit to the town that goes right along with something that many in the town have complained about, not the least of which is, you know, is addressing veterans, which in and of itself is its own benefit. And I think something, well, Mr. Fowler's been here the longest, but if I'm not mistaken, have tried to find a kind of housing in the town that has been in an effort for a long time. So, you know, when this is addressing, you know, so this is directed not look so much at you guys and more just sort of for public knowledge. I think you guys have made your case pretty strongly here for all of us, but, like I said, we just wanna make sure everybody hears this reasoning, that it's really being thought about and discussed. That's it for me. I'm good otherwise.
Chairman, a couple more comments, if I could, please. I'm not sure if it was brought up, but I believe the 21 units are all ownership units and not rentals, correct? Bruce?
Well, that's something we need to work with DHCD, is on how to do the affordable housing construction, and, you know, use a model that can introduce a limited equity model, that we've done on other properties. But, again, that's something that the funder, which is DHCD, is who we're gonna look to next to provide us the funding for this, to build this property, and how we work with them to kind of implement, you know, that piece of it.
Sounds good. My last comment, Mr. Chairman, is, once these units become available, I foresee veterans that are living in senior housing in Tewksbury relocate to these units possibly, because they're brand-new units, they're one-bedroom, totally furnished, totally van-accessible for, you know, their needs, that will open up other senior housing in Tewksbury for other ones, other people that are on the waiting lists. So the 21 units hopefully will be filled by some Tewksbury residents, if not all Tewksbury residents, but if, and then, but once that becomes available, it's a win-win where we got openings for others at Saunders Circles and Blaney Way and some of those other units, so.
Just for an awareness piece, about 80% of our current roughly 200 units of housing, a little more, are age 50 and older, so it tends to be kind of lean in that direction of who likes this housing, who likes the services, the support, and the community really is what forms within the building and the camaraderie. So it does often attract senior members of a community. Actually, in Agawam today, we just, or tomorrow, we're moving in a veteran.
It's not me. I promise.
Who's more of a senior veteran from the community of Agawam, and we had a unit open up, and he, you know, is who's moving in. So that's often what you'll see happen.
Mr. Delaney?
Just one, just one thought. Is it a preferential type of situation where Tewksbury residents would have preference to the units before others, or is it just whoever comes to get them?
Well, I think, I would love to certainly be able to do that. Again, DHCD, who gives us the money to build these units, have a certain rules that they go by, so I think it wouldn't be necessarily, we could name it, veteran or Tewksbury preferential, it can be veteran preference, obviously, but I think what we can do is certainly do a good outreach locally and an awareness locally of its availability, and I think you're gonna end up seeing a lot of local residents who end up moving in there.
Thank you. One other comment, and I'll plead ignorant if I'm wrong, but if I'm not mistaken, this section of Main Street is still not serviced by public transit, correct? Okay. At this point, what's this project's done, between this project, Petherwood, and the, it's not emergency, but...
Balsam.
And the urgent care. The urgent care. I'll ask you to do this in terms of reaching out to public transportation, and I think the town needs to continue to do this, because the fact that that section is not serviced by public transit at this point, and it still only goes up to the state hospital, which is fine, I don't have to complain about that, but the fact that it doesn't come back down and service this section of Main Street, and not forgetting also the junior highs there. I know they get bused typically, but again, you know, there is another thing there as well, that it's really something that should really be considered, whether or not it makes sense for public transit to start coming down that section of 38 for these facilities, or these, these facilities, businesses, whatever it is, that they don't right now.
We'll be happy to support that and send a letter or connect with someone, if you, you know, if we find the right person to connect with and reach out.
Bruce, I think if we did something like that along the lines with our selectmen, with our state representatives and our senator, to put some pressure on lower Rapid Transit Authority to see if they could do something to assist us and you as well, trying to get that, so. It'd be a plus.
I think you would have more pressure put to it. I think they would have a hard time refusing a veteran's housing, and that might be just enough pressure to get what we're looking for.
No, I'd be happy to and reach out politically, and we'll do, we'll do whatever we need to do to serve the veterans there, so.
All right. That's a good idea. With that, I'll open it up to the public. Now, I would generally...
How much by name?
What's that?
We're 10 bucks.
Correct. That's what we were just commenting on. But I think, I'm gonna go in reverse here, because we've got some people on the line, and there's definitely a little bit of a glitching with that, so I'd just as soon take those folks first. If there are people in the audience, just bear with me. Who do we have on the line? Okay, so we have someone on the line. If you could just state your name and your address for the record. Still working out the glitches in reverse. Do we, do we have anyone on the line? Someone at home who's on the line? Are you there?
Yes.
Okay. Could you state your name and your address for the record, please?
Hello?
Yes, can you hear me? Hello?
I'm in emergency, or hang up without.
All right. The floor is yours, so what do you have? You have questions or comments? Do we have a delay?
Hello?
Yes, are you there?
Yes, I can. It's kind of awkward, it's gonna say my name and address, but...
You gave us your name and address.
Oh, can I say your name?
I can. You can go ahead now.
Great, thank you, but, okay, great, thank you very much. I think that's, I have two concerns, and a part to the property. The first is the building height. You're comparing it to Heatherwood, Balsam, but those don't stop for residential neighborhood, especially in rural residential neighborhoods like ours with branch houses. So the size of the building is just really large. I mean, when we first built the town, that building when the project began, it had said more than 16 units, and we're working with the Northern Veteran Association, it was closely housing for, it wasn't the first step in housing, it was one big step, this was the first step, this was kind of getting their apartment, and having such that housing. But now, this is wrong, it's like, I'm just sorry, you know, it passed out to the homeless shelter, that there's some right on the door, or right, oh, is that insured, so they'd be capable to do, drugstore first, if that's the requirement for that person? So I guess, is there any concerns, any other to the property, if that?
Okay. Do you have any comments?
Is the concern that where the veteran is coming from, is that what I understood?
Yeah, you know, I think that their original thought was then was that there would be more, this would be further in their recovery, that they actually have, that they could go through, or just stabilize, or that job, it actually come to the...
Yeah, that's what we are. I mean, we would do the same thing. We have other programs that can work with the veteran to get them stabilized until they're ready, and then it's also eligible, as we were talking to before, to senior or just any veteran in the community or nearby communities that's looking for affordable housing. So it's a, there are men and women that we know, if they've come through our program, we know when they're ready to attempt to go live in this environment. And again, we've been doing this for 25 years, so we've got kind of, you know, an experience in how and who we put into a situation to be successful.
Okay, great. Just, just, you have a vote, and I'm really proud, so thank you for that. I'm sorry, I'll answer the words that you go back, I was just reading that. The second is just the height of the building, you know, I'm sure you're trying to build it, I can operate it, you can, to figure as many as you can, too, but it's hard to distort, I'm running in residential, so the height, you know, we've been hiding quite a bit, and it's, you know, it's definitely to our property values, and to the, for itself, you know, I just wish it fit in that body of life.
Okay. All right. So, okay, so, okay, John, I don't think there's any further comment on that right now, though, right?
About the height, no, I think we're discussing it, you know, is from the planning board, not from the program side, more or less.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, I mean, but that's, go ahead.
I don't know, I just, let's take that, there's concerns to buy the building, other than who goes to write, I think, since the father did mention that, like, there are health and birth aside, it would just be nice if it went back like that, whatever you would.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, I appreciate, do you have any other comments or concerns?
No, no, thanks very much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Brian, did we have more than one person on the line, or just the one?
Someone's supposed to be calling you.
All right, well, I'm sure we'll hear them in the background if they do, so. If there's anyone, if there's anyone here in the audience who wishes to speak, any questions, comments, or concerns on the project, please, we'll clean off the microphone, and you can step up to the podium.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. I guess, as one of the audience members pointed out, for those of you at home, if you happen to have your TV on and you're trying to call, much like a talk radio or sports radio station, you have to turn the volume on the TV down, because there is a delay between the two, and you'll get strange background noise otherwise. Sir, if you just state your name and your address, the floor will be yours.
Bill Kelleher, I live on Main Street, I've joined, buttoned those people. It seems to me that building's a little high. Two years ago, when this project started, it was 10 to 12 units. That was a lie. I was told by the original owners of the property that nothing would ever be built down there. That was a lie. Just, the lies just keep coming. The building keeps getting bigger, and in my opinion, it's way too high.
Okay.
These gentlemen are in good faith, I understand that, but I'm feeling it's a little too high there. Too many units. There's accidents there all the time now, from the people across the street, their driveways, buttoned another project across the street, every day the police cars are there, accidents, cars. I think it's too big of a project.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good. Stanley?
So, I just kinda wanna point something out to the board and the public as well. So the underlying zoning density here is, the underlying zoning is multifamily, the MFD, multifamily district. We have an acre and a half. So if we were to come to the board and ask for eight units an acre, that would be 12 units altogether, okay? But those units would most likely be two-bedroom, maybe three-bedroom units, right? So you would have as much as 24, maybe 30 bedrooms altogether. We have 21 one-bedroom or studios, so the actual density is less than what we could actually do under the by-right zoning. In addition to that, if we had to provide the market rate development, we'd need to provide covered parking. Covered parking would likely be below the building, which is, I believe, exempt from the building height in that district, so we'd actually have a taller building if we were to go and do this by right, according to the MFD. So, just kind of a point of clarification, I think it gets lost because we are going under the CVOD, but I just kinda wanted to mention that.
Anyone else with any?
Hi, I'm Miriam Haynes Kelleher, and you just listened to my husband. One of my concerns was, and I believe you answered that, about case managers. I was wondering if there was going to be one there permanently. You answered that as no. And when this first started, it was supposed to include families. Are there going to be no families there at all?
Not in this project, because this is...
Hold on, we can't do it that way. We have to clean that off and hand it over? Oh, yeah. Use that one for now?
No, there are no families. You know, we really serve the veterans' needs of the veterans that we see, so I think we see the need for one-bedroom units, we see it all over, anywhere that we work, so that's why we have the single occupancy, single-bedroom units.
No problem. My husband's a veteran, we have no problem with veterans in that site. But as for the sidewalk, it's not that great. You know, there's a lot of dips in it and such, and I see people in wheelchairs having sometimes tough times getting up and down that sidewalk. I think that should be something that is addressed. And I am also concerned about, you know, where your driveway is to our property, to our driveway.
Okay, so as far as sidewalks go, again, we'll review that with DPW, who makes a point to make sure that the sidewalks in front of any new development are in decent shape, but we'll work with them to make sure that they're satisfied, but also the state has jurisdiction, right? So there's two layers of kind of review going forward on that, so we can look at that. And then your other comment was?
The driveway.
Oh, the driveway. And again, I would go back to... Oh, the driveway, and again, I would go back to DOT, we'll look at how adequate our access is at that location. So I know we exceed the minimum length between two driveways at that location for two different locations, so, but DOT is going to have the ultimate say on that.
All right, and will you be removing the whole metal fence there, or just part of it, or...
Yeah, I think it'll, it'll be, I think what'll end up happening is, part of it will stay, part of it will be removed, and we'll replace part of it. But that's kind of the next step as we move through the process with DOT.
Okay, and I noticed just the property lines between us. What work will be done between people's property lines and yours?
So between our edge of pavement, our parking lot in your property line, we have ten feet that we're going to provide, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. We have like eleven plantings along that side to try to provide some kind of shielding between this development and the existing residents.
Okay.
Trees.
What type of trees?
Yeah, so, let's see. I'm going to have to get back to you on that. I don't have the type right in front of me, but I'll find that out and let the board know at the next...
So, can I make a request then, too? I mean, obviously, we have a couple of abutters, we have one on the phone, we have one set here tonight. If maybe the proponent could just try to touch base with the abutters, and maybe you could send them, you know, rendering or whatever you have...
Sure, sure.
So they can see what the landscape buffering that they might find between the two, between their property and this property, to see, again, if, you know, they're satisfied, if they might have a suggestion or a comment that you guys can work out, and I think that might help.
Definitely.
Okay.
You know, and I came because of, you know, telephones, watching your meeting on the conservation for this property, I noticed how many even problems I had watching the show, so that's why I came in person. I also wanted to get familiar with the faces with this project, and just say hello.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it. Did you have any other questions or comments?
I got one more item to say to you.
So, again, I'm sorry, just because you're stepping back up, could you just state your name and your address just again, because it has to get picked up on the record?
What'd he say?
State your name and address again.
Bill Kelleher, I was just here.
No, I know, I'm sorry, sir. I know that, but it gets picked up and recorded, so we need it for the record, for you to say it again when you step up.
All right, I just wanted to mention that there's a wetland down there. I don't know if anybody's noticed.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
I mean, every day, we get animals coming out of there, all kinds. There's deers, there's a wolf that's running around down there, there's plenty of wildlife down there. What's going to happen to all of that? That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else with any questions, comments, or concerns on this project? Thank you. All right. Okay, so, anything else? Okay, so they're touching base, you're taking care of that. Again, just, you know, while there's a couple of side conversations, just, I want to make sure, and I don't want to, you know, carry the water for the petitioner here again, but the alternative, again, that could be on this property, because we're talking about the heights of the building, we're also talking about potential traffic concerns with the cars coming out, the alternative type of build that could go on in this property could have a much denser amount of, you know, folks that are living there than you see in the twenty-one units you're talking about here. You're talking about twenty-one units, twenty-one people, because there's single, single-person housing. So, you know, as the proponent described, the other possibility of the kind of build that you could have go on here, the height would be in line or even greater than what was being presented here. The number of cars coming in and out of the site could be substantially increased with a different kind of project here. So, you know, much is our case all the time, that we have to weigh these things when we're considering a project, and we do, that there are alternatives, and sometimes those alternatives, in many of these cases, when we do this, the alternatives are not the best, excuse me, in the best interest of the town. The project before us is what's in the best interest of the town, when you weigh it all together. So I just, again, those things that kind of get lost in the translation sometimes, is that, you know, there are other things that could go here, and a lot of the concerns being brought up would either be moot, because they would no longer require a waiver and could just be done, or the density of what, you know, would be put there would be more problematic to the abutters, the town, and just overall, not, not as useful, obviously throwing out the affordable section, possibly. So all those things are important to be remembered when we're considering this thing as a whole. Do any of the members have any further comments at this point?
All seven, Mr. Chairman.
All right, hearing none. So you folks have some things, you know, to straighten out with town engineer, planning, obviously some touch bases with the abutters, so that those things can be addressed. And with no other comments, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to continue, Mr. Chairman, to the July nineteenth meeting.
All right, so that would be seven-ten. So the motion to continue to seven-ten on July nineteenth, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, it holds in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it. Moving on to agenda item F. Two oh five Washington Street, modification to site plan special permit, land disturbance permit. Do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
So moved.
You have a second? Motion made second, holds in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, so we have, we have a little setup going on. If you could just state your name and maybe let us know who else is with you.
Sure. Hi, good evening, I'm David Waterfall, counsel for the applicant, New England Power Company doing business as National Grid, and with me are two of my colleagues, Dan McIntyre from National Grid, who's in substation design and engineering, and our consultant, Brian Wentworth, who's from the BSC Group. We're here today for a modification to an existing site plan special permit and a land disturbance permit. I should be using this microphone, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great. So the project, I'm going to be turning it over to my colleagues, who are going to be able, they have a couple renderings here, a couple enlargements, that will give you a good sense of the scope of the project. They'll be able to give you some details on the technical aspects of the project, the scope. Before I do that, I just want to just make a couple, just set forth a couple things about the project. It is located at two oh five Washington Street. It's known as the Tewksbury twenty-two A substation, and there are, it's in an area, it's a heavy, the heavy industrial zoning district, where there are multiple substations, and we have a rendering that shows, just so there's no confusion about which substation we're talking about, we have an aerial, an aerial view that shows which, which one we are dealing with. It's a, it's a substation that's been in operation since the nineteen-seventies. This, the, the site plan special permit that we are looking to modify tonight was issued by this board unanimously back in two thousand fifteen, and it regarded a, an expansion of the existing substation, and that's why we're here tonight again, for reasons that we're going to be discussing. We're looking to bump out the fence and for room to install some new equipment to slightly enlarge the existing substation. So just, before I turn it over, I'll, I'll just say that, in our opinion, based on the limited scope of what we're doing, we feel that the benefit to the town and the neighborhood is outweighed by any potential adverse effects, and we believe that it also satisfies the criteria for site plan review and the land disturbance permit. And with that being said, I'll turn it over to, to Dan, who's going to explain the need for the project and get into the exec scope of what we're looking to do.
Good evening, Dan McIntyre with National Grid. The project before you tonight is really a, it supports the regional transmission network in New England. While National Grid owns the transmission lines, or much of the transmission lines in New England. Thank you.
So, actually, since we, since we found that, can we move that up over here? Because then it'll face out and the camera will pick it up.
We haven't been here, I figured.
Excellent. And then just turn it so that we see it too.
Yeah, kind of like this.
And then just back up, that way our last board member here is still able to see it. Perfect. How's that? I think that'll work. All right.
All right.
Continue, sorry.
So, as I mentioned, National Grid owns much of the transmission system in New England, but it's actually operated by an independent system operator, ISO New England. And ISO New England is constantly studying the network to make sure it's a robust and reliable network. And in one of their most recent studies, they identified a problem that can occur in the transmission system, when the Mystic Generating Station in Everett retires in two thousand twenty-four. So specifically, what happens when we lose a large baseload like that on the transmission network, it can cause fluctuations in the voltage of the transmission lines, and while that's not going to turn the lights off anywhere, it does affect the quality of the power that we deliver to our customers. And in an age of high-tech electronics that can kind of wreak havoc with that type of equipment. So the ISO issued a request for proposals out to determine a solution for this problem, and the solution offered by a joint venture between National Grid and Eversource was selected as the most efficient and economical at solving this problem. And the, the solution is actually to freedom projects throughout the region, and one of those is in Tewksbury. And what we're proposing in Tewksbury is what's called a static compensator, or statcom for short. And basically what that is, it's a regulator, so it'll sense the voltage in the transmission lines, and if there's an overvoltage, or if there's an undervoltage, it'll compensate for that, so we have a nice, steady power stream through the transmission lines. The Tewksbury area was selected as really the ideal area for this piece of equipment, because you're at the conflicts of multiple transmission lines in Tewksbury, as you, as I'm sure you're aware of. And specifically, the Tewksbury twenty-two A site was really honed in on as the best spot for this piece of equipment. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brian Wentworth, who can take us through these facility improvements.
She just put the bag up there. What's the key to get in this place?
We'll all rest today tonight, for the first million persons.
It's not in the job description, but that's all right.
You agree with that?
Oh, yeah. You paid extra for it.
Just put it right there.
Thank you.
So, Brian Wentworth from BSC Group, design engineer, consultant for National Grid. So what you see on the, on the aerial here is, in the center there is the existing twenty-two A substation, just to the southeast, where there's a red line, you can kind of see it there. It's an existing cleared area, where there's a gravel road, which circumvents the existing substation, runs through the, the area where the, the expansion will be. The gravel road is to access the transmission right-of-way to the north of the substation. As part of the project as well, the, the five distribution poles are proposed to their existing overhead lines, which are shown with the red line. Yep, thanks, Dan. Have to bring a laser pointer next time. The, the overhead wires are currently run through where the expansion is proposed, therefore they, the distribution lines are, are proposed to be relocated, as shown around the expansion. So this shows our, this shows our site plan design layout, with the, the hatching, the, the existing substation is to the left on the page, yep, the expanded area here. You can see the, the existing gravel road is going to be relocated around the expanded substation to continue access to the north, to the transmission right-of-way. The, the statcom substation expansion that Dan mentioned consists of a primary transformer, backup, secondary transformer, cooling, yep, a cooling building, and an enclosure for, you know, accessory equipment, electrical controls, as well as a couple reactors, right, Dan?
Yes.
The site design also includes paved access roads within the, the expanded substation area, shown in white there. And then, the, the site has been designed for stormwater to meet the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook. Includes a swale between the gravel access road and the expanded substation, which kind of wraps around and diverts stormwater runoff to a sediment four bay and infiltration basin. The infiltration basin retains the, the one-inch water quality volume, the site is, is located in a zone two area, and there's a, an outlet control structure from the basin, which will then discharge to the north on the opposite side of the gravel access road. The project is located within the one-hundred-foot buffer zone, so, and notice of intent with the Conservation Commission has been filed. That hearing has been opened and continued, pending engineering review by the town engineer. The Conservation Commission did not have any real significant comments during their, the meeting that we attended. We are also working with the town engineer on a couple of things. Mr. Hardeman, the test pits that we conducted in the fall of last year, we had to do those again that last week, so they could be witnessed by DPW, so that has been done on Thursday of last week. The individual who was out there agreed with, with our engineer's assessment where the groundwater was, and so, and it met, you know, was consistent with how we designed the, the basin. The other thing I wanted to mention as well, we had the interdepartmental review meeting on June first, answered the questions of the attendants there, fire department, building department, Mr. Hardeman was there as well. The other question that Mr. Hardeman brought up was the, the bylaw removal treatment of TSS, total suspended solids and phosphorus, which we did look into and believe that our current design does meet that, the bylaws requirements. I talked to Mr. Hardeman on Friday, and then again this morning, and they are currently working on their review and expect to have it in this week, so.
With that, let me turn over for questions.
All right, start with Mr. Fowler.
Believe it or not, I'm all set until we hear from Mr. Hardeman. But thank you for your, your summation.
Mr. Delaney?
I'm all set as well.
Mr. Patel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dan, thank you for the explanation of what we're doing on this project, very thorough, and I had my questions as to what we're actually doing here, but you answered them, so thank you so much. I did read in the report, Mr. Chairman, and gentlemen from the plan here, that the sound levels from the statcom, is that what it's called, were less than allowed by our town bylaws, which is great. bylaws, which is great, correct? So the noise levels that would be generated from this new addition would not be severe and come within the chart, I guess, correct?
That's correct.
They comply with the town bylaw and MASTEP noise policy, correct? So now I recall in one of our earlier meetings, Dan, as far as the lighting issue.
I remember that too.
Okay, so I don't think you've had any complaints about lighting, so I don't think if...
I think we solved that problem.
Yeah, so I remember that discreetly, so, because we needed to put those covers on or something, or deflectors on or something, all right?
The real issue was at our Tewksbury 22 station, the real large one.
Yeah.
We toned those lights down quite a bit, and that solved the issue.
So will we have any problems with lighting at this facility or...?
We're not proposing any lighting that's going to be on overnight at this facility.
Okay.
There's obviously going to be, you know, emergency lighting if there's ever an issue. We have to work at night, we got to light the place up, but typically there would be no lights on at night.
Okay. So did I hear you removing the fence that's there now and putting it out farther, right? Correct?
Exactly, we have to expand the existing fence.
Okay. I remember there were some issues with the fencing there as well, as far as some people being able to get over the fence maybe in some spots or something, so.
I'm not aware of that.
We waived the height, I believe, so that they could make it larger than it should have been, is that right?
Right.
Correct.
Maybe, okay. So, yeah, with that, I mean, I will wait to hear from Mr. Hardeman's comments on what he sees there as well, so thank you very much.
And sir, I would just point out, we will be going to the building department for building department related to the fence work and the enclosure of the fence.
Sure. Good.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. So the only thing is just to make sure that when we're doing these, the waivers we already gave, that we just make sure we extend them, re-grant them, whatever, for where the new fence is going, and we should be covered for any issues. As with everybody else, I'm all set, pending Mr. Hardeman's comments. Then we can revisit it and see where we are with that. With that, I'll open it up to the audience. Do we have anybody?
Dick, come over here.
Richie Cuco, 73 Emerald Court, it happened to be in a butter. Not a question, but a comment. The last time they were in for an expansion, I don't know whether it was conservation or planning, had them plant some shrubbery out along Main Street rather than, okay, could that be cut back because at least at maybe 15, 20 feet on either side of Power Company Road, because I come out of there every day, and it's not their fault because they were asked to put it in, but it's, your site distance is severely hampered because when they first put them in, they were maybe a foot and a half high, you know, now they're six feet high and the weeds are growing up, so I hope you don't put another condition like that on them, but maybe just as a, and I think it would help for the construction vehicles that are going to be going in and out of there, that they'd be able to see better if you cut that back. And also, as in a butter, we don't even know it's there, you know, you drive by it, but, you know, we have a side benefit that we haven't lost power in 17 years because we're so close, but thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with any questions or comments, concerns? Seeing none here, I suspect we don't have calls on this one. All right, so we've got a few things for you guys to deal with the town stuff, so there's a motion to continue this to our next meeting at 7:15. Motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
When is your next meeting?
I'm sorry, July 19th.
19th? Sign a waiver of the deadline form that sometimes we'll do for when there's a continuance on the zoning matter? Is that...
Well, unless you don't want us to continue it and want us to render it a standing right now.
Exactly.
We usually take it that way, we don't have anybody doing anything beyond that.
Okay.
So unless you're going to insist that we vote...
No, that's fine, and sometimes... That's fine, and sometimes they actually have a consent form that I have to just sign off on, but if that's your practice, that's fine, yeah. We certainly consent to the continuance.
I'm not sure if he's asking this, but our office will send the applicant a continuous form to continue it, so you will be receiving that.
Great, thank you, appreciate it.
Moving on to...
Great, thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Which is administrative actions, part two. All right. Administrative actions two, we have, sorry, 558 Clark Road, nonsubstantial change request.
Do you have a copy for the office as well? I can take, well... I can take it afterwards. I know Dawn has one. Yeah, I'll take that from the office.
Just state your name for the record before we do yours.
My name is Bridgette Cook. I work for the architect doing the office renovation for Evoqua Water Technologies at 558 Clark Road. So we're looking for approval for a nonsubstantial change to the parking lot. Currently, there are 80 standard parking spots and two handicap, and we're looking to add a total, we're looking to add 71 standard spots and three new handicap spots for a total of 142 spots. We're not paving anything, we're just restriping. Basically, they are having more people move to the Tewksbury location. They currently have two facilities, and their lease ends in one of them, and there's going to be more people working in this office space, so we're looking to just restripe the existing pavement that doesn't currently have any spots, looking for approval on that. So everything in red is new, everything in black and white is existing to remain.
Start with Mr. Patel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no problems with this nonsubstantial change. I mean, they're not doing any pavement additions, it's all there, they're just striping and adding more parking, so. But then, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Delaney, a moment.
Only problem is, it's only going to take me exactly one second to say I'm all set, so...
Let me ask you, when will this striping be done? Just as some information.
It's likely in about a month. Yeah, we're currently doing it in two phases, so phase one ends this week and phase two will be next week starting, so probably about a month.
So how many more vehicles you think would be coming to the facility?
Probably about 50 to 60 more than they currently have. They moved everybody out for the renovation, but they have about 50 people moving over from Lowell, so they're just looking to make sure they have enough for the new office.
So that'll bring a little more traffic to Clark Road and...
Market Basket.
Market Basket.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Delaney, any comments?
I'm all set.
All right. Anyone in the audience have any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none in the audience, I presume nobody on the line? All right, that being the case, bring it back to the board, what is the pleasure of the board? A motion made, do I have a second?
It's not a hearing.
Oh, that's right, it's a nonsubstantial change.
Nonsubstantial change.
That's why, the other half of administrative actions. So what is the pleasure of the board on the nonsubstantial determination?
Motion to approve the nonsubstantial change as requested at 558 Clark Road.
Finding that it is a nonsubstantial change, all right, motion made, second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, now as to the nonsubstantial change as requested.
Make a motion to approve the nonsubstantial change.
All right, Mr. Fowler, seconds. So we have a motion made, second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Moving on to agenda item G2, 307 Old Boston Road, nonsubstantial change request.
Clean that.
Hello? Mr. Chairman, board members, Dick Cuco from Woodland Design, representing Access Tewksbury LLC Properties for 307 Old Boston Road. You probably recall this project, it's fairly complete. We were in that, just to give you an update, we were in a while back with our ASBILT, and there were some issues brought up by the DPW relative to the pavement out along Old Boston Road, it wasn't parallel. So they're in the process of getting a contractor to cut the pavement and extend the lawn out in that area, so. So before they finished up the last bit of landscaping, they went and got their permit for their pylon sign, which is on order and should be constructed very shortly. So when they went out there and did the markup of the sign, they noticed that you really can't tell that the property is there because they're quite a distance off of Main Street with the pylon sign. So the sign company came along and requested to put a sign on the westerly face of the building, and unfortunately, we don't have a direct access on the westerly face of the building. Had we a direct access on the westerly face of the building, we would have been able to apply for a sign for that side of the building. Unfortunately, the, I think the drawing, or the photograph that we sent to you, the dimensions were cut off, but the Comfort Dental sign that's supposed to go on the gable end, the building itself is about 42 feet long, and the sign is 18 and a half feet, so it's below the 50% coverage, and the sign is 24 inches high from the taller letters, the capital C and the capital D, those are 24 inches, so the smaller, the lowercase letters will actually be a little smaller than 24 inches. Where we already have a special permit for the sign, I didn't know if this could be classified as a nonsubstantial change and the special permit to allow the sign to be on the westerly side of the building that does not have direct access. We will not have a attached sign on any other part of the building, even though we're allowed to have one on the front of the building, there'll be no other attached signs on the building, only this one sign. And there's no, if you're out on, if you're on the westerly side of the building looking towards Main Street, there's a lot of vegetation in there, so the sign wouldn't have any negative impact on any abutting property. Thank you.
Start with Mr. Patel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no problem with the building sign being 18 feet long and 24 inches high. Mr. Cuco, are you doing the other sign? Are you doing, are you doing the other sign with the stanchion that's there now?
Yeah, they, that's on order.
Okay.
Yeah, it...
How long has it been on order for?
Well, right now, to get a sign, six months.
Wow, okay.
Another victim of COVID.
But then, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman, I have no problems. Yeah.
All right, Mr. Delaney?
I'm all set.
Mr. Fowler? See this?
Thank you. Yeah, I think it fits in and there was, oh, there was a sign, I don't think it, I don't think it requires a permit, but Mr. Hardeman reminded us that there's going to be a sign on the edge of the driveway that Main Street South, left turn, so that people... Yeah, and so that, and he had a good point, if you're going, if you take a right turn when you come out of the property and then you want to go south down Main Street, you got to make that 290-degree turn, so there'll be a sign in the parking lot that says, "To Main Street South," and you'll take a left, and then you can go to the other crazy intersection.
Yeah.
Yeah, or go down Power Company Road once they trim the shrubbery.
So, Mr. Chairman, do we need a waiver for this?
Well, that's, that's a, for my, but, so, we don't need anything?
So no, Mr. Chairman, this wouldn't need a waiver. In my memo, I just stated that the applicable bylaw would be Section 5250. A, and that's because this doesn't have a direct entrance, it's the wall with not a direct entrance, so it's, 5250. B isn't applicable. So the requirement of the length is it can't exceed three-quarters of the width of the wall, but in this instance, he's, they're going to comply with that, so this doesn't require a waiver.
Good. Okay. Just one question, I guess, with what Mr. Cuco mentioned, but do we want to condition this that there would be other signs put on the building?
We have no problem. Yeah, we have no issue with that, Mr. Chairman.
So is that fine? All right, so now it'll be the one condition on granting this, again, administrative actions, so what is the board's feeling on this as a nonsubstantial change first? Motion to approve, two, motion to accept. All right, so the motion to accept the nonsubstantial...
Second.
Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, as to the nonsubstantial change requested. Your motion?
Motion to accept the nonsubstantial change as written.
Okay, so we're granting the nonsubstantial change for the sign as shown and depicted this evening with the condition that it will be the only attached sign on the building?
The exception of possibly like a one-foot-square sign because there is a tenant spot, but that wouldn't be a big sign.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so we got the motion made, do you have a second? Motion made, second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, thank you. Moving on to old business, do we have any old business anyone wishes to discuss?
Chairman, we have the change of the sign of the plans, the permits.
Oh, that's right.
That expires tomorrow. We could bring that up, if you want to be candid, I'll go back to the old one.
I mean, I have no problem with it, I don't think anybody else does, it needs to be working fine unless anybody feels really strongly about coming down and deciding the name of it.
I have no problem with it either, I mean, it just keeps a running record of who actually was on the board at the time, but...
That's in the decision, so it's pretty safe there, yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, we would just need a motion to make that effective?
Mr. Fowler, do you have a motion to extend, I guess, just to extend it until otherwise voted by the board?
I'd like to continue this arrangement that was made on March 3, 2020, or the chairman can be certain to decide all plans and decisions until second time of the term.
And the motion made?
Second.
Motion made, second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Any other old business? Or new business?
So, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if it's old or new, but we did speak about this before, but the Walgreens down on, at South Tewksbury, there's got to be 15 trees that are dead at that roadway there.
Yeah, I don't, obviously, I drive by the road, that's where I am, I can't understand what's going on, but we know they replanted them. I don't know if somebody pouring, you know, bleach in there, but I don't understand what's going on.
It just looks horrible whether they either they take them out or whatever, but I mean, I think there's enough trees there that they could just take them out and still suffice as a decent, you know...
My only concern with that is that obviously we had gotten the comments from the neighbors, that's what made us feel with this the last time, that I, be it removing them and then not dealing with them, I don't know, maybe we could, maybe we could reach out to... Maybe we could, maybe we could reach out to, probably whoever it is that we reach out to there, to see if they have another suggestion of other things other than the trees we've previously requested to maybe mix in that maybe will last better? You know, some medium-sized bushes as opposed to the trees that may...
Some of them made it, some of them look fine, but I don't know, maybe they just got a bad lot.
But that's not understanding either, what's killing some of them and not the others?
Yeah, I don't know, but I just think we should do something about it because a dyed head called from somebody and we go...
I thought from the road.
I thought that, but I wondered because it's so weird that many of the trees are perfectly fine, and yet others look like someone was spraying weed killer on the roots of the tree. Honestly, I wonder if somebody's doing that. You know what I mean? That someone's accidentally thinking that they're just spraying for weeds and they're killing the trees at the same time. But it's really up to the property owner because we're either going to make them replace them over and over again, which is a costly thing, or they're going to have to come up with some answer for us as to how they're going to deal with it, if they have some alternative what they'd like to try.
So, Mr....
Go to Mr. Powell.
Possibly, maybe it'd be beneficial to find out why when we had to replace those trees that were there. And I thought it was a major problem.
Correct, that's what I meant, too.
The lights from the cars, Mr. Powell, I think.
If we could find out if we took them out and they complained again, that they're going to have to look back. So maybe someone should communicate with that party across the street.
I mean, I don't know what the other members feel like, too. I mean, I know, you know, some of the trees seem fine, I don't know because they can't all survive against each other, but I also wonder, kind of like what we did with vergicings, whether or not sort of a small, sort of one of those white fences kind of mixed into the thing would cut the lights down but still look good. You know, I mean, they just went through doing that whole paving, that sidewalk, all that stuff looks nice down there. I'd hate to do anything that looks terrible. So, I mean, really, it's on the property owner to give us ideas, but I mean, that's, you know, those are possibilities as well. There's something that's going to do for the neighbors what they expect, but at the same time, there's going to be something you have to look at every 12 months to find out, you know, a dozen, you know, two dozen dead trees.
Do we actually know what kind of a tree it is?
I think it's an abovati. An abovati.
They're evergreen, except for the fact that they are not evergreen.
Ever brown.
I notice the same, you know, I notice it all the time going by. Never thought the same.
All right, so I had a new business item I wanted to throw out to the board and see what you guys think. I'm very chown it and think about it when we get back in July, but whether or not there's any sense or appetite for adding something into, we put it in this administrative action two section, and also as time allows, of whether or not there's any sense to allowing a public comment time. Now, my reason for this is I'm tired of the flack we keep getting and finds its way onto these message boards and everything else, or comments that people think that there aren't opportunities for people to, you know, register their comments and concerns or whatever. My caveat to this thought, though, is this, is that I don't want it to devolve into a complaint session. If people aren't going to come in, don't just come in and tell us what you don't want and what you hate about us or whatever. Come in with some sort of constructive comments, you know, so that we can actually have a discussion where, you know, don't just tell us you don't want these kinds of buildings. Explain to us what you think should go there, and, you know, it'd be great if you had some ideas as to how that might happen, or the things you'd like to see versus others, that's fine. But if it devolves into a, you know, a complaint fest, they can go back online and have at it. But, you know, I know there is a public comment section in the selectmen's meeting. You know, I just don't know if there's any sense to it. I know our meetings are different, and there are going to be times where we just simply aren't going to have time for that kind of stuff. People are just going to have to understand that. I think, usually, I think at the beginning of the meeting, we probably have a decent idea of how bad our agenda is.
Yeah.
And we could probably let people know that it's unlikely that we're going to get to the public comment section, that it's an as allowable, you know, as time allows thing. But I wonder if maybe, whether it actually does anything for those who have complaints about us. But I think it would certainly cut back on people's ability to say that we aren't providing people the opportunity to register their questions, comments, and concerns in one general way and not necessarily specific to any one project.
So, I look at what took place at the town meeting, like for our zone.
I mean, there was a gentleman there who was trying to rewrite the book. You know, I don't know if that's a good idea. We have an open room now where people come in and voice their opinion on different projects. I think if you open it up and they start, we could have a line of people here forever.
True.
I some way agree with what you're saying, but I don't want to see what took place a month ago.
Which is sort of along my lines, if it's going to devolve into a complaint session, if nothing constructive going on, then it just simply ended.
And see, the thing is, Steve, when we start something like that, okay, who, how do we stop? You know, if it starts to get a flow to it, how do we stop? You know, it's... I'm here for residents of the town. I think a lot of people feel as though this guy, a builder, owns a property. He comes in with a plan. Now, we can change the plan, we can negotiate all kinds of things from that plan, but we can't tell a builder that he can't build on his property. So the thing is, I'm, I think what I'm saying is, I don't know if we'd be opening up another box or if, I'd have to think about it some more, but I just don't want what took place, and you were as part of that as I was, Steve. You...
Yeah, I mean, in my opinion, I don't have a problem opening it up to the public, but it has to be a timeframe. We can't do it one week and then tell them, "No, you can't come," if they've come. So if we open it up and we have a couple of residents that will give them a question or a forum time or whatever, if they have an opportunity, you know, to contact the community office and say, "I want to come in and speak about this issue," you know, "this issue or that issue," we give them, you know, three or four questions that they can, we can address, fine, but, I mean, we have to either do it or not do it because people will want to come in.
Also, Steve, put a time, can you put a time limit on it? You know, in other words, if they come in, you know, just like a town meeting, they get five minutes to voice their opinion.
Right.
You know, we'd have to look at it, something like that, when we write it up or we approve to do it. I would think that's the best way to go.
Mr. Powell?
I'm all set with that. Mr. Galaney, bring my mind of the time, if that's the way to limit it. If somehow we get to say constructive conversation about different subjects on a public forum, that's all.
Okay. I agree.
So, you know, I was going to need to make a final decision tonight, but, you know, maybe think about it and decide maybe on the July meeting what people think. I think the only thing to Mr. Patel, is that we have made it clear that this second block of administrative action area, that we made it clear that that is the "as time allows" sort of section, which means that we've already told people that there are going to be things that might get bumped if it turns out we have one of those nights. So they're just going to have to accept the fact that they may, you know, they're told in advance, if the meeting gets out of, you know, out of hand timeline, that it may get bumped to our next meeting, it's just, you know, that's the understanding.
We've had a few, you know.
Exactly. So, I mean, that's, you know, if we give that information upfront, and as Mr. Powell said, you know, that information will be something we put out, same on the website, where it's, there's a time limit, we're expecting constructive conversations, not, you know...
Well, you know, Mr. Chairman, maybe we should put it in the beginning then, because if people are sitting here for three hours, you know, because of the premise that'll get discussed, and then all of a sudden we tell them at the end we can't, we're going to have irate citizens.
The whole reason we moved this other thing to the second section is because we need to get to the public hearings. They have a priority for us, and they're the ones that are really under time constraints. They don't have to be here all... Right. And like I said, we have an agenda that we know right off the bat, it's, you know, a pagey, then some, or whatever, we know right off, we can tell them right from the meeting starts, we are not going to get to the public comment sections tonight, you know, that way they don't hang around. Because we can tell them, we got, when this goes through, you know, queue, we know we got the night we have, you know?
The thing is, it...
But they're going to be hesitant.
Is there a way that we could...
Then they got to go home.
...adapt the fact that we're not going to hear you tonight?
Which is the same thing when we have a hearing that gets continued. They show up, and at the beginning of the meeting, we tell them, "Hearing aye has been continued," you know, depressed, and they hear, and then they go home. I mean, I understand it's not ideal, and again, we don't even know a requirement to do this. I'm trying to offer up something as a possibility, and simply it's going to have to work within our parameters, or it doesn't.
Right.
You know, and people just have to understand.
We could do a trial thing, too, Steve.
See, the only thing is, I feel as though if we start it, and it does get out of hand, how do we stop it?
I think because we're not beholden to doing it, I think it would be the same thing. Say, this is not being as productive as we vote. It's devolved into, you know, a, we hate the planning bullet session, and that can go back to being something they do online. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, because that, you know, I mean, as I said, we're trying to offer up a courtesy, is the way I look at it, to folks. If they go, if it's going to turn into something that is discourteous, then we don't continue it.
Yeah, because people do have questions and comments about this project or that project, or what's happening with, for example, what's happening with the old hotel issue that was up on North Street, or what's happening with the building on Discount Madness, and we may have answers for them, you know, so...
There may be an opportunity for a little bit of an education session with this sometimes, for folks who maybe don't quite understand something, how we have to deal with it, and it might give us an opportunity to have that conversation with somebody. You know, rather than trying to, you know, tell me in the middle of a, you know, "Well, I heard a page document."
Sure.
All right. Good enough.
When I...
Yes, sir.
This is from the, I'm not sure who owns it now, the Sheens site on Main Street, across from you.
Skewers?
Skewers, across from you. There's a fence out front.
Okay.
Four sections are knocked down. There's landscaping in front of that and behind it. Not maintained. It's horrible. It's just horrible, not maintained at all. And they said, "I don't know who owns the site now, but they should be notified that it's part of, you know, it's a special permits." We have the right to tell them to fix it. The fence is deplorable, and they have to do something with that, and they have to maintain the landscaping. Let me see if he's that aye.
I will take that as a motion, if the board sends said letter. Mr. Ginti, if you could?
Yes, can you please confirm, Mr. Powell, the address? This is the site across from Skewers?
I'll send it for you.
Okay. Yeah, if we could touch base, that would be great.
But in our case, we have a special permit, is the reason for us to say it, so... All right, so we've got a motion made, or a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Takes care of that, no other new business? Correspondence, we have that first piece, anything else in the correspondence that anyone wishes to discuss?
2131 Main Street.
The gravel pit?
Yeah, the gravel. It might be. I didn't really look at the list that close by.
He was, told us he was going to start again in 60 days, but that's a questionable decision.
They went all that time to get that permit.
Across from Hafner's.
And then they just brought gravel and they dumped it.
I mean, Bootrose.
So, Mr. Galaney, a gentleman came in today to pull, to start the process for building permits.
Okay.
2131.
2131 Main Street came in today.
Thank you, Don.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Don.
The only other piece, and I'll take this side of correspondence, as well, it was the one that clearly should have seen the forwarded message from the town manager regarding the training, if anyone who can...
June 21st?
You know, attend.
Monday.
Yes, so if anybody can, feel free, you know, please.
Sounds like a plan.
It's been offed up, so...
June 21st.
So I just wanted to comment on 2131. I had emailed on Friday the applicant for 2131, just asked for a status update on that. I haven't heard back, but I was going to refer the matter to the building commissioner, the new building commissioner. So...
Dawn just said they took out a building today. I were in to take out a building.
Yes, I heard that, but, you know, in terms of the addressing the condition of it right now, I don't know what, you know, this, how long the building permit's going to take to get started, so, so that's my only comment.
All right, if we have nothing else, let's take a...
Make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made, do you have a second? Motion made, second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Good evening, thank you.
And it's nice to be here.